Okay, welcome everyone to the regular council meeting on Tuesday, October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty five. The regular meeting of the City of South Council held in the Council Committee Room and our chambers at thirteen ninety-four Pine Avenue, Trail BC. And we assume live meeting commencing at three P M. For the committee of the whole meeting and then immediately followed by a closed council meeting and reconvening at six P M for the regular council meeting. Meeting webinars are recorded and published on the city's YouTube site at trail dot C A slash YouTube. So the first item on the agenda is to adopt the agenda. Is someone able to make that motion, please? Thank you. And is there a second or? All those in favor? And thank you, that was carried. Um. Next item, I need a motion to resolve into the committee of the whole place. All those in favor? Thank you, that was carried. We have this afternoon our department verbal updates. And first one up is the airport manager. And we have Tracy Butler here to report on his behalf.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I was very busy preparing for the business after business tomorrow at the airport. So that's October, October the fourteenth, starting at five thirty P M. And the civic coastal cancellation shuttle has started as of October the first. And we're currently doing crack sealing on movement areas, which is runway and the landing areas. And we're also conducting an obstacle survey on the north and south sides of the airport. That basically identifies trees or other obstacles that may impede airport operations. Since that's what's happening out there currently. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Butler on those? Airport report, airport report. No, okay. Um, next item is our communications and events manager and I will hand it back over to Tracy.
Thank you. Yeah, Claire sends her apologies, but she's very busy right now. Um, pushing out the exciting media relations on the unicorn childcare announcement. So that is going out as this meeting is happening. So we will see that press release probably in the next few minutes. Um, so reporting out on the Friday's home opener game for the Smokies with over twenty-two hundred attendees. And Mayor Jones beginning the game by giving Rich Murphy a large thank you card that had been signed by city staff, elected officials, S D twenty, superintendents and many more people. So it's kind of a neat momental for him to take home and put on his, his wall. Um, we changed the logo at the entranceway of the memorial center and put a little logo of the Murphy Family Foundation. So you'll see that just to acknowledge their contributions and support to the T M C. Uh, working on Spooktacular, it's coming up October the twenty-fifth. Final details are being confirmed and advertised. And National Truth and Reconciliation Day was a very successful event with four hundred people in attendance and numerous community partners. Uh, October first, so following that was the amazing and aging seniors fair at the library that was very well attended. Kudos to Sam Murphy, our library executive, executive director for meeting such a great event. Um, the city supported the event by offsetting the Legion lunch for attendees, music in the Jubilee Park and ads or adverts for the event. We are monitoring media, the local and provincial news showing interest in covering events and trail. And we're earning lots of media and most of it is positive or of a neutral tone. Um, also looks like we saw over a hundred thousand individual viewers of city content in a sixty day period. So definitely people are tuning into what's happening in Trail. A little bit of a slowdown on the social media postings lately just because of other work related priorities that are coming up, such as the notice of the unicorn daycare. Looking ahead, remember it's staying November eleventh. The Holiday Magic Parade is scheduled for December twelfth. And the ongoing discussions about the one twenty-five year trail camping. That's it from communications.
Great, thank you. Uh, any questions from council on that? Okay, thank you. Uh, moving on to general manager of corporate services and David.
I'll speak to you worship. Um, so corporate services is working on a few of the items from the notices of motion that went through at last regular council meeting. Uh, so we're working on the letter that will be sent to the R C M P and also the reports related to the Crown lands um, within uh, the motion that was passed. Um, and then also uh, myself and manager of legislative services, Ms. Lugini. Uh, we're fortunate enough to attend the corporate officers forum um, a few weeks ago. Um, and there was a number of good seminars that were put on during that forum. Um, a couple that are pointed to next year was a good workshop on elections uh, for the upcoming October twenty twenty-six election. Um, and then further to that, some more information on good practices for orientation and onboarding for new um, and existing council members that are um, moving into the next term. Um, and then there was a number of other good technical seminars that we, we pulled a lot of good information. Um, so that was a good viable forum to attack.
Okay, any questions? No? Okay, um, moving on to museum archives and visitor center management. Sarah Benson.
Yeah, I'm gonna use Jared's template here, so we'll go through a a few key uh, headers here. So some key accomplishments and milestones. Finally, our press release went out for our community magazine digitization project. Uh, it took a while and that was on the um, the end of our platform post. The B C regional digitize history, but that's out and we got a little bit of media coverage from that, which is great. And I'll report on some stats. We do get um, quarterly stats on the usage of our digital assets on that site, which is really great to get. Uh, some operational updates, Q three stats are as follows. We responded to forty-two research inquiries. We hosted seven in-person research sessions. One thousand four hundred and two hundred, one thousand four hundred and twenty-five donations and approvals process. We were working through a pretty big backlog of specifically photographs, but that's how many were processed and accessioned into the collection, which is great. Uh, our visitor center staff saw travelers, travelers arriving from all over B C, Alberta, Manitoba, Nova Scotia, Quebec, Australia, Washington, the U K, South Africa, Nova Scotia and Germany over the last month. That was just the last month. Instant reporting for Q three totals nineteen, staff was handling the patron court of conduct issues and breaches, exterior cleanup. We had one theft and some facility equipment issues like our, our front doors and our and we had a malfunctioning fire panel on one day. Our deaccessioning project continues with a thorough inventory and assessment of the artifact collection complete. We're presenting our recommendation report to the Historical Society later this week. And um, yeah, we anticipate that the formal removal of these items, so gone for good, will begin before the snow flies, although who knows, that looks like it might be sooner than later. Last week, we hosted two Fortis B C representatives, one their um, facility ops manager and the other their head of privacy to assess the extensive West Cootney Power archival collection. So we look after hundreds of photographs and their textual records dating back to about eighteen ninety-seven, eighteen ninety-eight when West Cootney Power was first formed. And we've acted as stewards of this collection since two thousand and five. Um, we'd really like to make the photograph collection available for viewing online. But in order to do that, we need permissions. And as a result of some back and forth over the last two years, I've requested a transition to an outward donation. There've been very few um, folks from Fortis accessing the collection to even look at it or most probably don't even know it there. Uh, so they needed to come in and assess exactly what was there. We've got a very good arrangement of it. And they were here for two days and we're through all of it. So their um, their privacy division will make some, draft a report and make some recommendations. So I hope to hear by the end of the year whether or not that will come to us. There could be some restrictions put on that, um, as many large corporate collections have specific to personnel and addresses, you know, private personal customer information. But there's very little of that. So we're hoping they'll be agreeable. And we've been active in industry conferences this season. I intended, I attended the Interpretation Canada Virtual Conference in September. Learning more about the unique ways museums and parks are making their sites and experiences more engaging and accessible. And last week Addison and I both attended the Archives Association of B C Virtual Conference. So we were learning from our peers in the archival world. Key topics were accessibility, ownership, copyright, oral history and decolonization effort. Types of things people are talking about right now. Uh, capital projects, our early industry exhibit case specs and design elements are finished and approved. So the manufacturing has begun. We'll be visiting tech next week. I'm excited to tour some of their storage areas and identify any unique pieces that may illustrate the scientific and academic strength of the company in those early days. They've got stuff just sitting in corners that would be, you know, pattern molds from the pattern makers. These are died, these are, these are long gone trades now that we hope to um, to showcase a little bit more. And thank you, David. The Sports Hall of Memories lighting was replaced last week. If anyone was at the rank, I hope you saw cases look spectacular. The last reno of that space occurred in two thousand and three and the outdated lighting system is both problematic and harmful to the collection. So the new L E D strippings can be repurposed. It was one of the things we asked when we were looking at potentially how the the T M C could be remodeled. If we're going to invest this money into new lighting, can we reuse it? And the answer is yes, it'll just reconnect, which is great. So we'll repopulate the cases with some new content and we'll dedicate a few to Trail's history with the B C gates. Um, but probably the far back wall, the, I understand the, all of the, the food will be down the red floor. So we'll have some great opportunity to showcase the collection there. Community engagement and feedback programming continues to engage a community with our regular scheduled outreach at long-term care. And we welcome three hundred and sixteen participants to fifteen program events in Q three, which included the nineteen sixty-five grad reunion and many of them had not seen the new building. It's so much fun to do tours like that to, to show off the building. And we of course hosted Eileen De La Henty Perk to present her book Big River last month. And then she was accompanied by Shelley Boyd and Cindy Marsh and of the Snipes Confederacy. And they included information on the work they're doing around salmon restoration of the Columbia River. It was fascinating. Um, National Day of Truth and Reconciliation, of course, I reported on that. Again, we were honored to have the Snipes Confederacy with us for that. They're youth drummers. They opened up the event. Uh, feedback was really positive and we hope to expand and make it maybe make it a little bit different next year, change it up. Uh, the museum staff supported the amazing and aging event as well with setup, takedown and participant engagement. We did a lot of surveying for them. And um, the setup was, they used our galleries, the libraries, space was, was sort of left alone. So they were in the galleries for those events, which was great to showcase that. We continue our partnership with Trail Times and the Trail Blazers feature. And to support the collection development and oral history program at the Columbo Lodge. So um, to date, I've conducted twenty-seven interviews with Men's Lodge um, members this year. And stats on our digital asset usage continue to increase. Q three saw just over twenty-two hundred users of the digitized Trail Times collection. Only, that's only up to about nineteen forty-seven. Uh, the rest is coming and the photograph and community collections saw a total of just shy of four thousand total users for um, Q three. And we're regularly uploading to, to their site as we get through our backlog. So looking ahead, Spooktacular is Saturday, October twenty-fifth. We're collaborating with the Mexican community of the Cootney Boundary for a Dia de Muertas altar in the front window. Really excited about that. Uh, the community will be invited to bring a photo of a loved one or a pet to present on the altar in memory of them. So just something a little bit different. Uh, the King of Sandin book launch is Saturday, November eighth. So we'll welcome Greg Nestor um, for the trail launch of his book. Been long awaited. And if you haven't seen it, it's beautiful. We have it available in the gift shop. And Trail one two five planning is underway. So the museum and visitor services operations are currently contributing to a commemorative community guide for twenty twenty-six. So we're going to change up the visitor guide to be more of a community commemorative side for twenty, for next year, maybe a bit more content. Um, we've got a meeting with Black Press to see how we can make that happen this week. Uh, of course, our archival calendar, which will be a little bit more special and commemorative for twenty twenty-six. And some unique community engagement activities. We hope will generate some interesting insights for both staff and council. Uh, some cool content for a unique legacy project and of course, more content to enhance the collections. That's what we're doing.
Okay. I know. Um, any questions from council, council best.
It's through the chair. Uh, you talked about one theft from the riverfront center. Was that from the museum or from? It was on our um, main counter surface, counter and Ensigne Stolson Library Commemorative one hundred library materials, little tote bags and yeah.
Oh, I know.
We know who it is.
Oh, we know, yeah. Okay, well, thank you very much. I don't see any questions in the rest of council. So uh, we will move on to uh, manager of planning and climate action, Chris.
Thank you, your worship. This will be my first month to report to you all. Uh, I'm following Gera's checklist complete, so it should be a pretty similar format. Uh, the top of key accomplishments and milestones. The bulk of my time has been both on going through the onboarding process here at the city. Uh, marketing just over one month employment. Um, part of that was actually posting on meeting with a few members of the phone community to understand kind of historical loan trends and identify ongoing challenges or endpoints. Under the topic of operational updates, um, I, I reviewed past development trends and statistics based on the minutes, council minutes from twenty twenty-two today. And then preparing a summary for November uh, to council, which would inform potential revenue potential recommended updates to the planning process, uh, the procedures by the law. Um, next week I'll be attending a upper master training, um, so which will essentially allow me to officially assume the role of the designated approving officer for the city. Um, that will bring the in-house expertise to approve subdivisions, which I understand was contracted out previously by uh, entry here. Um, I also began working with internal staff and departments to understand currency processes and to identify opportunities for improved coordination, both within city hall as well as through regional partners that are regional district. Uh, meeting with building officials later this week as well as the department. Um, under the topic of capital product updates, uh, my focus has been the efficiency, community plan of the products. Uh, currently under review, I have given the consultants a huge, a large swath of comments for through. Uh, we're essentially working through to ensure land with provincial legislation, um, enhanced readability and clarity. As well as identify future opportunities for improvement in the current draft document. Um, we are targeting to bring the O C P to council December eighth for our first reading. Uh, prior to that, we do hope to grant to council for a workshop at the end of November. Uh, this will be alongside the workshop and that be strategic priorities. On the topic of community engagement and feedback, uh, we're planning bringing and O C P public open house around November twelfth. But the date and venue are still being determined, so there should be an announcement shortly. Uh, we have an O C P survey uh, to be released at the end of this month. That, that's in correlation with this open house. And finally, uh, as I said, we're, yes, we're preparing uh, to present that O C P to council for that, that workshop session. Now, looking ahead, um, we will continue work on the O C P incorporating my feedback as well as the public uh, open house feedback. Uh, so that will be just refined draft by December eighth. Next month I'll be preparing a presentation. So summarizing essentially historical funding statistics, application cost comparisons with nearby communities. I've done a bit of analysis there. As well as uh, review regarding um, statistics. Uh, and I'm going to be recommending that you updates to our current development procedure file. Um, I'm also reviewing public notification requirements and exploring legislative flexibility for implementing a public notice by law uh, for which we have power. Now, this would give us flexibility in our advertising for development permit, I don't want various permits or certain zoning amended bylaws. Uh, and finally, I'm initiating discussions with B C housing to establish regular coordination and reporting. Um, the initial meeting is still to be scheduled in between to your background, Mr. Baker. But that's about it. My first of any questions?
Wow, okay.
Sorry, information heavy.
No, that's great though. Lots of good things happening there for sure. Um, does council have any, okay.
Yeah, through the chair. Chris, when is the workshop where council will have a look at this?
Uh, I'm through the chair, working with our, our CFO and city manager. I don't know if that date's been, been set.
No, we haven't said it, but we was, the discussion with staff was, uh, if we've got this O C P, uh, you know, time, get council together as a workshop. We talked about, I think, the many view of having as a future priorities update. And so we were looking at the end of November was the plan.
Good, thank you.
And this will give you an opportunity to, to see the draft document for the official first reading as well.
But just through the chair, there's an open house scheduled for November the twelfth, and I understand ninety percent of it will be complete by that time. So is that, do we also have an opportunity then to?
But it's more, I think, at that one, the council casual was also public.
Right, okay. Thank you.
By, by December eighth, we are hoping to have a public input implemented in the draft for each of the C.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Yeah. So I'm really excited to see the work that you're doing with B C Housing to get regular um, coordination of meetings, uh, just to follow up with them. And you know, we've been sort of trying to get that to happen. And it's great to see that you're, you know, working on that as well. So looking forward to see what happens at that end. I don't have any questions and I don't know if anybody else does on council. Okay, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Uh, we are on to finance department. Mr. McClure.
I think so, Mayor Jones. So for me right now, we are in the process of gathering the information to bring to council the third quarter update. So we'll have that for the October twenty-seventh. Uh, then really have surprise, some sort of situation where we're again higher in, in parks and less in, in public works. But again, could almost call for some snow here in early October. So that's uh, one of the things we have to always be prepared for, that we might have a big cold wet snowy uh, you know, end of the year here. So that could put some pressure on us, but overall things are looking positive. Um, and in line with what we expected for our budget. Uh, the uh, big piece for me is that we're going to start utility budgets for twenty twenty-seven. There we go, Council Benson, I'm so happy to see you. Excited to, to get back into budget. We just finished. Anyway, uh, it'll be good to sort of see where we're at. I know that some of the work has been underway. It's uh, particular for a big planning year that we've had this year. And in particular, in the sewer, we've got a lot of spot repairs and work going on with the plan that we will do a big year of uh, uh, cure in place or inline uh, work in the sewer system. Obviously, the, the water is the one that we um, are challenged with as far as where our rates are. That's where we get the pressure from. Uh, we have some ideas on some of those results. Uh, also as council will be aware, we have not heard, but we did apply for that uh, strategic priorities fund to see whether or not we could get a big chunk of that particular Charles Lake Tweening funded. That would be fantastic. That would be really helpful for the community. But uh, we know that we're always, they're always oversubscribed. They uh, they release those sort of uh, application processes for that, that is provincial funding. Uh, at this point in time, uh, we're also have hired a tax payable and that staff member will start next week. So that is one of those pieces that will get our team fully whole. Yeah, we're moving um, quickly. Uh, you know, again, third quarter means budget means we're heading to year end. So we're getting prepared for audit time again. So and the general audit, uh, sorry, general operating weather. Was able to deal and work with the number of new entities for the economic developments and got those paid payments underway. And uh, know that we're already in discussions to have them come earlier this year. I think probably even a time late November just to discuss, hey, for doing that, what does it look like for twenty twenty-six instead of where last year we were far behind? So just getting, you know, the groups together, making sure that they're aware of the, the coming and preparing and in particular, working together as uh, as they come, they're out, so we don't have duplication. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Nope, okay, thank you. So that ends our department reports. And I just want to thank everybody for taking the time to come in with the product council. It's always good to hear what's going on in the different departments. I will move on to monthly reports. Uh, we have a bylaw enforcement report for September twenty twenty-five. Uh, is there someone to make that motion? Thank you, Council Hanson. Is there any questions or comments about that report? No, having seen anyone, any questions, sorry. All those in favor? That was carried, thank you. Um, on to the McBride Street Playground and post that, my fact that was. Uh, is there any uh, questions on this report, Council Benson?
Um, I noticed we've, I think we've looked at a couple of playground replacements now. And in previous one, it talked about like the lifespan of the equipment. And I was wondering if you have that information for this equipment. I didn't see it in.
Right, um, I don't know. I don't know, um, Jim. Minor, if you've got any idea on the, to give us a lifespan. I know that we went out to ensure that we had equipment and of, you know, being able to build on it, I think, but I don't know if we actually asked. Lifecycle.
Yeah, thanks. Um, I don't have it at the tip of my fingers, but I consider it that.
Just curious for, so quite a big spend for. I was just, yeah, surprised, hoping, but if it's like gonna last a really long time, that's one thing worse is a five year.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can speak to it. So um, most of these playgrounds, the equipment are built out of, you know, solid steel, powder coated um, to try and remedy any kind of rusting or anything like that. And then all of the molded plastic is also built to last. The existing McBride playground that is there, has been there. That is the oldest piece of equipment that we have. So it has been there for a number of years and these should exceed that.
Um, but could me, just uh, we got some updated information as well, but we'd already said the stat before, but we'd had some questions with McBride in particular because of the fact that we had budget of a hundred thousand dollars and the price came in at a hundred and forty-one and change. Um, and part of that was the fact that they would be willing to, if council approved this, that they would hold their price until um, they finish completion, which would be sort of in March twenty twenty-six. So um, fact that they would hold the, the cost of the, the actual, till we get into next budget cycle, which it doesn't mean that we don't have to look about asking you to you know, allocate from here and allocate from there. But what we will need to do is commit in twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-three, financial plan, the hundred and forty-one, which I think uh, takes some uh, you know, the one motion that we had to ask for that reallocation is unnecessary. Uh, and that being just at this point in time man, you know, giving roots is saying if we have a council motion or resolution saying that they, that we're, you know, gonna P O for this project, they're willing to hold their price into twenty twenty-six. And I think we should take advantage of that.
That's great. Thank you. Uh, is there any other comment? Okay, so the recommendation is before you and the recommendation is that the previously approved budget of one hundred thousand dollars for the McBride.
We're not gonna have that motion because we're, because they're gonna carry it on the pricing until twenty twenty-six.
Okay, so we don't got to. What about the second recommendation?
Need to prove that.
With the total amount, okay. Um, so the recommendation is uh, that council award the McBride Street Park Playground replacement project to bring roots, play equipment incorporated in the total amount of one hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars and fifty-five cents, including G S T.
Yeah, they could just for, just so that not to make confusion, we talk sometimes about inclusive and exclusive of G S T. Uh, part of that is the fact that we get a hundred percent rebate on that. So I try to be consistent on saying, um, you know, exclusive, just to tell them what the net price will be for the city. But uh, it's also accurate to say including G S T is the one forty-eight, just in case you were wondering about why the different numbers.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you. Is there someone to make the motions? Thank you, Council Benson. Uh, a second or please? All those in favor? Thank you. I didn't mean a second or none. Okay, on to the uh, major downtown development advisory committee amendments. I will um, pass this on to um, Tracy or David?
Nope, that's fine. Thank you, your worship. Um, so through the chair, with the notice of motion that was passed at the last, last meeting. Um, obviously that meant that we needed to uh, amend the current terms of reference. So I've incorporated uh, into that terms of reference from that notice of motion and just put the recommendation of the four uh, new members, but that of course, that number is up for council debate. So was anything else that we've included in this terms of reference? So I did pass the draft terms of reference through the actual committee on Thursday. And none of them seemed concerned about staying on now that the mandate has um, gotten bigger.
A lot bigger. Uh, any questions or comments on this uh, staff report on the amendments? Council Benson?
Uh, thank you through the chair. So just a question in section four point two of your staff report, it talks about cautioning about including housing expert planners and other professionals in related fields as it could create um,
Cautioning about including housing expert planners and other professionals in related fields as it could create um. Potential conflict of interest. Um, and I'm just wondering, given that this committee is chaired by Counselor Hanson, who's a licensed real estate agent. Um, could that be perceived as a symbol? And what should we do to manage that? I would say that it doesn't, it would if all of a sudden she became. You know, when it's built, she became the exclusive realtor of selling those apartments or whatever that it is that's there. I would say, yeah, that would be a perceived conflict or actually could be a precarious conflict of interest if she's sitting on the board. But in the planning stage, I would say not. So then, could you say the same thing about having a like a development or?
Yeah, again, if I could, um, the one thing remembering in all our committees. All of these committee minutes or any resolutions all come to the council table. So so there's there's also that protection if you're concerned. Thing wasn't uh as it was. Uh, the the concern, I guess, or our thought process was if someone was wanting to be the developer or wanting to be the architect on this project. And they were also providing us uh who wanted to sit on this, that would maybe make them. Be less like, so you might be looking for someone that I'm tired that, you know, so who who are we uh trying to have professionals come and sit on the board? There could be a risk that you lose the opportunity for them to be kind of part of living on this portion of a project if we got to that stage. That's that's just one, that's just kind of, yeah.
Council Hanson. Thank you through the chair. I actually have chatted with a bunch of um housing type development in other municipalities when we were down at U B C M and asked how they've been structured. And some of them do have individuals that are developers, that are land experts, that are planners, um realtors that actually understand, that can provide value. Feedback um from a uh hands-on perspective of what they're seeing and dealing with. So it is very common in similar type housing type committee structures. To have all of those experts in the field, especially in a local area, to understand what they're dealing with. So this is quite common.
Okay, is there? Sorry, oh, sorry. Go ahead, Tracy.
And it can be quite common. And also looking at the size of the municipality that we're dealing with. We're in a small area, so we. Now, we have a few contractors out there that have somewhat monopolies on situations. So it's just bringing the attention to council that there is potential. For a conflict of interest. Um, you know, or if you get a developer who is. Pro modular and he's pushing, you know, modular, 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 then all of a sudden your development becomes modular. And his company's got that contract. Those are the things that you have to be cautious of.
Thank you. Yeah, we, I mean, I'm sure we can still bring them in for information um. You know, into the meeting for information um gathering, but uh to actually sit on the committee.
I would just be very cautious of how you.
Okay, thank you. Um, is there any other questions? Is there someone to move the recommendation? Thank you. All those in favor? That was carried. Uh, the next item is the staff report on the Community Safety Task Force Committee uh appointments and terms of reference.
I guess I can speak to that perhaps with support from Counselor Benson as she's part of that task force. Um, but these were all recommendations that came through and you will also see them repeated in the minutes that are coming up in the regular from their committee. Uh, it just meant that because of those recommendations, again, just like the major downtown development advisory committee. The terms of reference have to be changed. So that's incorporating um from their minutes what they request for those terms of reference amendments.
Okay, thank you. Um, Council Benson, did you want to add anything to that?
Um, no, so, well, yes, I guess I do. Um, so the the first one is, we we have quite a few people that um that sit around the table and. At our our last meeting, we just really wanted to have a bit of clarity in terms of roles, especially like if it came to a vote. Uh, and uh we we understood that there there's a a few people that sit from interior health. However, there's only one. Voting delegate who is from the mental health and substance use group in our. Terms of reference, it's it's a substance abuse. So we're gonna, that's part two to just make it what the the group is actually called. Um, and there was some um desire to have a population health um designate at the table as well. So. Although a lot of people at the table, many are guests, um and there'll be two voting members from interior health. And the second one is the R D K B manager of emergency program. So this would be Mark Stevens or his um designate, who'd probably be Carleen. Uh, reason this is important, and I think Counselor Martin talked about this at his last. Um, R D K B update was around the warming and cooling shelters. Those all get put through the regional district. Uh, and through Mark himself. So having him around the table would make it a lot more efficient when we're talking about. Uh, warming and cooling centers, um as it's through the regional district that we get funding. And then uh we took a vote at the last meeting um because the terms of reference. Um, say that it's a bi-monthly meeting and it was um. Voted to become a monthly meeting, just just made it, vote just passed. And that is it.
Thank you, Counselor Benson. Um, okay, is there any of the questions about the um? Amendments and the terms of reference for the Community Safety Task Force stuff? Okay, so I'll do each of these recommendations separately. And the first one is that council appoint two additional members to the Community Safety Task Force Committee. The Regional District Coating Boundary Manager of Emergency Programs or the designate. And the Interior Health, Population Health are designate. Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. That was Carrie. Uh, the next one is that council amend the Community Safety Task Force Committee Terms of Reference Membership. From the Interior Health, Mental Health and Substance Abuse to Interior Health, Mental Health and Substance Use. Replacing the word abuse with use. Is there someone to move that, please? Thank you. Uh, all those in favor? Thank you. That was Carrie. Uh, that council amend the Community Safety Task Force Committee Terms of Reference meeting by replacing bi-monthly with monthly. Thank you, and all those in favor? Uh, that was Carrie, and that council direct staff to amend the terms of reference as presented October seventh, twenty twenty five. Thank you. Um, all those favor. That was Carrie. Okay, so on to other reports. We have the Curling Association uh request for rental waiver. So, um. I can, so at the last council meeting, we had asked uh. To get some information on the grant and aid that was being provided and David did that in his memo. I don't know if there's any questions on that, Counselor Benson?
Thank you through the chair. Just maybe a question for Mr. McClure is, would it be appropriate to maybe have like a mid-year check-in to see how things are going?
Um, I don't think there's a concern of having a mid-year check-in. The challenge was that they're kind of in their world, they're at the beginning of their of their.
Right.
Uh, year. So that's one of the uh issues, I guess, on some of the timing of some of these documents going forward. Uh, I know that we have been um slowly with the ice making kind of focused on the Kameko Arena and then the uh. The work that was being done on the uh kids' rec, and I think at the same time, uh some work in the curling club now. For some reason, I think there might have been. Some work uh halt or some checks to go on in there. So I'm not sure where they're at or whether I've opened and. And having not did some the later opening thing for most of the ranks than as usual. So yeah, I certainly we can ask them. Um, yeah, at this point in time, for them, I guess, in their eyes, uh, it's as calm as soon as it kind of comes. Before December thirty first of twenty twenty five is probably their biggest question. But yeah, we could certainly do a check-in to see how they're doing for their numbers.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Go through the chair just, and it just seems a little inefficient. So we're gonna provide them with a grant and aid and then they're gonna turn around and pay us. Is there a more efficient way to do that or?
Uh, I mean, I guess in theory, we could um, we could do a general entry rather than than having a check. That's certainly something that we could do.
Just one.
It's a fair statement. Yeah, we would probably recommend that.
Uh, Counselor Hanson.
Thank you through the chair. Uh, thank you, Counselor Benson, for bringing that up. I was wondering, um, as they're working into their. So we can avoid having this situation that grant and aids keep happening and happening and happening. Is there um lease, I understand is that's coming due or up for renewal? And has that been reviewed to maximize efficiencies with the Trail Crewing Association?
I I don't know where we're actually at with the new lease because I know we're creating the the um. The ice right now, but I don't know. Everything was on hold because of their thoughts of expanding how or changing how they did operations. But I don't know where we've landed. Same kind of the question, you know, uh, the request they had was the timing of the meetings and that we were saying, yes, we would be happy to work with you on that. But I don't know if we finalized it. Your opinion stands across. We haven't finalized it yet. Uh, usually what's um. The the lease payments for that follow whatever we've done for a rate increase on the parks and rec um. Fees and charges by law usually uh applies to the curling club. So whatever their overall lease payment was for the season. Is added by whatever percentage increase goes to the um personal rent fee charges by law. And the way the lease has always been structured before was they would pay monthly on that um total lease number. Uh, but what they have requested, as C A pointed out, is they don't get a lot of their revenue until later in the season, just the way their leagues are set up and and how they're paid as the total association. So they've asked for, you know, less payments at the beginning of their um season and kind of back a little bit to the end so that it. Hopefully will help them kind of manage their internal financials a little bit better. So we're receptive to that because by the end of their season, the total will be the same. It will just be a different way of structuring how they pay. And we're working through that right now.
Yeah, these are uh their two final payments for last year. And because they did so well with the Bachi tournament, they were able to pay one um month's rent, right? So this is the last one for last day. And I'm really excited to announce that they are um launching that Devil's. League, and so far they have had nine new teams sign up. So they're really excited that that's going to be uh really helpful for them. So they do have some more registration coming up at the end of the month. Uh, to uh for more teams, so they don't um. Think that we open until the middle of November, starting so that we're almost halfway through their season.
Counselor Hanson, thank you, uh, and there's. Um, and I I suppose the question is because of the way that this is structured, being a city facility, but trip um curling association uh using the facility. Is there a way to help them or do we, and this is just my ignorance, do we help them promote? It or is there advertising their own thing, their own responsibility, or can we promote it as it's a benefit to us as a city? That they're having new things sign up or something like that, as as then we don't have to worry so much about ensuring those payments aren't made. And we can help promote, cross-promote it for them.
Uh, good question. I I would say that in the most parts of history, we haven't done that sort of across. I think there was uh because of some of the discussions we had a good raise. Um, again, the ability for our own um use in while or different schedules. And so I again hadn't followed that up. With everything sort of been uh focused on getting the ice plan up and ready. Kind of had that's been our things, but we will take this back. And uh again, these are some good questions if we need to follow up because I believe when we had discussed um city usage for having our our program. Or sport coordinator kind of look at that as an option. Um, there was sort of a question to ask, you know, where they're already, how can we do that? So there's some things to look in on that side, but it sounds like we also need to finish uh getting the lease completed. And I would say to you that we probably may have the charging amount a lower rate this year. Just on the fact that if you haven't had used the ice, if usually did, then we'll have to maybe do some some math on that side for that as well.
Okay, and there's no other questions. We'll move on to the recommendation and that is that the application for the trail. Curling Association for a rental waiver in the amount of five thousand dollars that represents the final lease payment for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five season. Is there someone to move that motion? Thank you, Counselor Benson. All those in favor? And that was Carrie. Thank you. Oh, yes, right. Columbia Basin. Alliance for Literacy uh application and request of labor. Um, this is a leap into kindergarten program for families under the age of six. To promote physical literacy and big gross motor movement. And by having a free drop-in program, most barriers are removed for families to attend. Is there any questions on the application? Okay. So the um. Recommendation is that the request from the Columbia Basin Alliance for Literacy for a rental waiver for the fees associated with their use of the Kameko. Gymnasium for the leap into kindergarten program be uh sorry, is there someone to make that? Thank you, Counselor Hanson. Uh, all those in favor? And that was Carrie. Okay, question period.
We do have three individuals online. Uh, or two now. So if anybody who is attending online would like to uh. Ask a question of council, if you could just use the raise your hand function, please. Hasn't appeared that we had anyone that wants to ask.
Okay, thank you. So uh, the next item on the agenda is a resolution to rise from the committee of the whole. And the uh, yeah, is there someone to make that motion, please? Thank you. All those in favor? Was carried. Uh, a resolution to exclude the public, to recess the public meeting until six P M. And immediately convene into the closed session. And the resolution is that pursuant to the section ninety, the community charter that publicly excluded from this portion of the meeting. As the subject matter being considered relates to the following. Community Charter set up in ninety one C, Labor Relations or Other Employee Relations. Community Charter Section One L, the acquisition disposition or expropriation of land or improvements. And the Community Charter Section Ninety One L. Discussions with municipal officers and employees respecting municipal objectives. Measures and progress reports for the purpose of preparing an annual report under section ninety eight, annual municipal report. And further, that the public portion of the meeting be recessed until six o'clock P M. And further, that council immediately resolve into the closed portion of their meeting. Counselor Hanson, thank you. Is there a second after that? Thank you, Counselor Benson. All those in favor? And that was carried. Thanks, everyone.